Which flag? Where's the flag?
I'll start by making the announcement that the meeting is being recorded by the local cable TV department, Area 58. If you would all rise and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is our continuing summer adventure, Halifax Board of Selectmen Roadshow. So we're here at the firehouse in Halifax, and in a few minutes we'll listen to some comments from the fire chief with them. And it's an opportunity for the Board of Selectmen to get out of the town hall and actually interact with people, which is a good thing. And also another opportunity for our various departments, this is the third or fourth one we've done this summer, to get on TV and brag a little bit about all the good work that goes on in Halifax. So that's why we're here, and thank you all for coming. The first thing on our agenda, though, is a tax classification public hearing, and I have a thing I have to read here. So the Board of Selectmen will hold a public classification hearing on Tuesday, September 12th, 2023, at 6:00 PM at the Halifax Fire Station, 438 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass., for the purpose of allocating the local property tax levy among the five property classes for the fiscal year 2024. So I guess I have to make a motion to do that, right?
Yes, you want to open the public hearing?
Yes, so, excuse me, I'll make their motion to open the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion from the board? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, the public hearing is open. In case anyone doesn't understand, and I'm sure the assessors will explain it, but the tax classification is an annual event where we determine what the tax rates will be based on the types of property. We're not setting the tax rate, that's done after we have the budget set and all of that kind of thing. So it's more of a procedural thing than anything else. But I'll ask the principal assessor to maybe come up to the microphone there, just tell the world who you are and what you have to tell us.
Good evening, I'm Debbie Dean, I'm the principal assessor for the town of Halifax.
Debbie, Debbie, can you pull your microphone down right in front of you?
Pull it down to the floor.
There you go.
Is that better?
Put the mouth right in front of it.
There you go.
Yeah, don't be afraid of it, it won't bite you.
You're good.
I'm not a public speaker, so this is a little challenging for me. So this is a classification hearing for fiscal '24. The purpose of the classification hearing is for the selectmen to vote on how to adopt the tax rate policy for Halifax. The Board of Selectmen will select a residential factor which will determine the percentage of the tax burden among property types. The town of Halifax has under 10% commercial, industrial, and personal property, therefore a split rate is not recommended by the Board of Assessors. The real estate and personal property total value is $1,385,119,480. That's up 13.4% from last year. The Board of Assessors have also recommended to not adopt the following: open space discount. This is for land that is not developed excluding chapter land, permanent conservation restricted land, and income-producing parcels. The town is not protected by lien, and there is not a penalty for change of use. Halifax does not have parcels that are considered open space. Residential exemption: cities and towns such as Barnstable, Nantucket, Cambridge, and Boston with high second home populations and/or resort communities benefit from this exemption. This exemption is for owners of occupied residential properties and shifts the tax burden on non-resident owners and multi-unit owners. There are only 61 second homes in Halifax. Small commercial exemption: communities that have adopted this exemption have a much higher percentage of commercial properties. Halifax has 4.9% commercial. The property owner receives the exemption and is not required to pass the discount along to the business owner. Halifax has already adopted the exemption for personal property businesses valued at $3,000 or less. The Board of Assessors are recommending that the Board of Selectmen vote no to these exemptions and in favor of the factor of one, which would mean the residential and commercial industrial personal properties are taxed at the same rate for fiscal '24. The Board of Assessors would also like to inform the Board of Selectmen of the excess levy capacity for the current year is $8,436.49.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or anything? So this is a public hearing, and so are there any comments? Anyone wants to make a comment or ask a question? Now's your opportunity. Okay, seeing none, any comments from the board?
I'd like to thank them for their work.
Okay, so we need, I guess we should do this in four separate motions. So the first motion will be that for the move that we...
Establish a residential factor of one.
Yeah, perfect, thank you. So the first motion will be to establish a residential factor of one and not to adopt, rather, a split rate.
So moved.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Motion number two: not adopt an open space discount?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. The third motion: not adopt a residential exemption?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous and passes. And the fourth one is not adopt a small commercial exemption?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. So I will now move that we close the public hearing. Should we have a second to close the public hearing?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously, and we'll return now to our regular meeting.
Regularly scheduled programming.
Regularly scheduled programming, okay. So the first thing, the point that we have after this, rather, will be at 6:15, so we have a few minutes to go through the agenda. Approval of the minutes?
Approval of the minutes, regular session August 8th, 2023, regular session August 22nd, 2023, executive session August 22nd, 2023.
So moved.
Any discussion?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Approval of the warrants and commitments?
I move to affirm the approval of following warrants and commitments: payroll warrant number 17 for $260,971.72, vendor warrant number 19 for $934,837.37, withholding warrant number 19 for $74,552.97, vendor warrant number 21 for $171,109.2, ambulance commitments from 8/21/23 to 8/27/23 for $49,648.24, ambulance commitments from 8/28/23 to 9/3/23 for $40,304.62.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
I move to approve the following warrants and commitments: payroll warrant number 20 for $422,104.44, school warrant number 22 for $350,628.26, vendor warrant number 23 for $45,364.85, withholding warrant number 24 for $145,775.23, mobile home park fee number 9 for $5,148.
Just on that payroll warrant, Najah, it was 45 cents, you said 44.
Sorry.
It's all good. So I will second that with the 44 cents.
44 cents.
There you go.
You got it.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Our chief looks busy right now. All right, he can take up a road opening permit, and then we'll come back to that.
I think the chief called it in because he knew he had to load it.
Oh, he's going to talk, we'll get him up here.
So this is a road opening at 25A Street, 4x6, cut in the road to install new gas service.
Okay, I'll make that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Chief Witham, do you want to come on up here and introduce and overview the fire department to us? Again, thank you for being a host.
Good evening, everyone.
Might want to take that mic up a little, just to kind of talk into it.
Readjust everything.
Yeah, there you go, that's better.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Usually I don't need a mic, but I guess tonight I'll use one. Good evening, everyone, thank you for being here. It's a pleasure to have everyone here. Obviously, with the selectmen bringing everything on the road, kind of a good thing, gives the opportunity for the public to see each department, meet the department heads, meet the staff members within the department itself. I think it's a good thing, you can kind of put a face with a name, so by them going around to different departments, you know, I think it's a good thing. Face with a name, my name is Mike Witham, I am the fire chief here. A little bit about me, been involved in the fire and EMS service for about 32 years now. I am a paramedic, I, you know, currently hold a paramedic status, so I can jump on an ambulance and work just like any of the other guys. Little bit about our department, the structure itself, looking at an overview of the department, we have the chief, four captains, we have 10 full-time members, that's including the four captains, and then roughly we have 13 call members. Out of the 13 call members, two of them are paramedics as well, and the other 11 are five are EMTs. We do currently have two members in paramedic school to try to bring our department up a little bit more with paramedics, which is a great thing. The overall status of our shifts, we run four shifts now currently, we try to work it with a one captain and two firefighters working daily. That can change depending on vacation time and other things like that, that's what we try to work now. With four shifts, I told you that we have 10 full-time members, we have two members on each shift, obviously that's eight, we have a float shift, or what we call a float shift, where that one person may work group one, group two, and the other person works group three, group four. On their off shifts, we fill in with the call members as well, they also fill in times that, you know, vacation times and things like that, sick time, they'll fill in as well. The structure of our department, again, like I said, it's myself, the captains, the full-time members, and the call members themselves, and we also have my administrative assistant, Kendra. Kendra does a fantastic job keeping all of us in line and making sure the daily operations run efficiently, so thank you Kendra, she does a great job. We do run an ALS service here. Currently, we have two ambulances outside, obviously one just went through a call, I apologize for the noise and the else. We did put our second ambulance in service shortly, thank you to the townspeople who voted on that, gave us the ability to get a new ambulance, it was definitely needed. We recently put that in service, it's working out great, and we thank you for that. As far as the fire end of it goes, we have two engines, which are normally parked here and here, engine one and engine two, engine two is our newest one. Both vehicles are dynamite, I would say that Tom from DPW, our mechanic, and all his staff work tremendously with us to try to keep our vehicles running in a great shape, do all the daily maintenance, which will obviously extend the life expectancy of all of our vehicles, so thank you to them. We have our tow trucks, so we have our tow truck in place here for our fire, we also have two other vehicles out back, which are our brush trucks, and we also have command vehicles. Command vehicles would be the shift commander's car, my vehicle itself, just recently passed that for me, thank you, I appreciate that, it's a vehicle out in the air if anybody wants to see it. We appreciate you, you know, your love and support, obviously, for the fire department, you know, since I've been here, I started last September, since I've been here, the residents have been extremely grateful to all of us that work here, you know, we've had no issues so far, and hopefully we're doing everything we can to, you know, help everybody out, okay? As far as future plans of the department, my ideal situation would be probably two more full-time members, which would give us the ability to staff two ambulances. Currently, we run, and a lot of people don't know this, currently we run three members, so we have a captain and two firefighters on duty at any time. Example would be if we get a medical call, which we just did, the normal running procedure would be two members in our ambulance, the captain would be either in the vehicle, in the car, or in the truck, depending on the type of call. If that ambulance did transport to the hospital, we'd be left with one member here. If that was filled with any of our callback members, then we'd be staffing back to two, and we'd have the availability to run our vehicles. If it was unable to be filled, then we would actually go mutual aid, so don't be surprised if you see mutual aid, ambulance is here, engine's here, things like that. We have mutual aid agreements, where if we have short staffing, or we can't staff a specific vehicle, whether it be an ambulance or an engine or anything like that, mutually it would come in for us, and also we reciprocate and we go out. So you may see our ambulance in another town, on the side of the road lights on, you know, hoping them out of times, we reciprocate back and forth. With having that, two other members, we'd have the ability to staff two ambulances and/or two ambulances, one ambulance and/or an engine, if another call came in, so I think that having those two extra people in the future would be beneficial. That's about it, not too much to say otherwise. My time here has been fabulous, I have no complaints, working with the board itself, they've been phenomenal, Cody's been phenomenal, all the members here that I work with daily, I've had no issues, and I hope that we're doing everything we can to help other community. If there's any questions, comments, concerns, please feel free to reach out to me tonight or contact me in the future, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief, that's a very, very good introduction, and again, we appreciate you being the host, and show it off the fire station for us, that's wonderful.
Thank you.
So to follow along with that, we have, excuse me, the next thing is Captain Cuzo, who is going to talk about an incident and a couple of hometown heroes that we would like to recognize. Captain?
Thank you, I'm going to walk around a little bit while I talk. Well, thanks everybody for attending, thank you for the Board of Selectmen.
Because you're in the camera there, you don't want to have them, like, focused on your ear.
Right, on my forehead. Again, thank you everyone for coming, just to double check, is Mary here? That's you, yes, you're here, okay. And Rebecca, Becky's here, good, and, okay, so kind of a feel-good story for tonight, which is always nice, hometown heroes. A lot of times in our profession, you know, we're called for rescues, but a lot of times as well, we're kind of in the mindset that we're going to do a rescue, and hopefully hope for a good outcome. However, it's not every day that the average civilian, members of the public, expects to make a rescue and the outcome be as well, equally as good. So tonight, we have a nice little story to present. Little backstory to what happened on May 7th on the water rescue, is the rescuers, two young members of the population, the community, Cole and Lila, they were the rescuers, however, I was having trouble getting ahold of the rescuee, Michael Hughes, and I did a little research, and I'm trying to get ahold of him, trying to pinpoint him to have him come to the meeting. Well, as it happens, at the Patriots game the other night, my wife was with her friends, and Michael is a bartender at the atrium at Gillette Stadium. So it just so happens that small conversation came out, whereas Michael was the one who got rescued on that call, and I told my wife just days previously, I was trying to get ahold of him, to have him come to this event tonight and meet Lila and Cole again. So the way it worked out was just phenomenal that my wife met Michael Hughes even before I did, and was able to give him the information for him to come here and meet Lila and Cole, which is kind of nice. So Michael, raise your hand, there is. So quick, yes, quick story with the water rescue. May 7th, we got a call, the fire department and the PD, for a person in distress in the water. The person was in distress, you know, near drowning, and we got a call to go assist. So before we even got there, we heard that some civilians managed to get the victim out of the water, which was great. So the story is, is Michael's with his family on the beach, Anna One Beach, and it was the young child's birthday, and he had a remote control boat, well, the remote control boat went out a little bit too far, and lost contact with the remote, so Michael thought that, oh, I can go out and retrieve the boat, you know, and just bring it back to shore. Well, it was a little farther out, a little farther out than he thought, so he swam out, got to the boat, and then proceeded to, I guess, the words, panic a little bit, and kind of take on some water and go under, and he was unable to come back to shore. So at first, he yells, "Help!", and some people on the beach kept waving and cheering, and the family was there waving and cheering, and he proceeded to yell again, "Help!", and he screamed, and then everyone was like, "Oh my God, he's yelling for help." So two members of the community here, Lila and Cole, were on the beach playing football, you know, two young kids, teenagers, playing football on the beach, having a good grand old time, and next thing they know is they have a member, you know, someone, the civilian in the water, screaming for help. So without a moment's thinking about it, Cole rips off his shirt, sees a guy in distress, jumps into the water, right? Now the family, you know, the wife and the kids, things are, people start to panic a little bit, Lila jumps in and calls 911. So talk about a team approach. So we have Cole who jumps in the water, swims out to help Michael, Lila starts gathering the kids, because Mrs. Hughes kind of ran in as well to help her husband, so Lila, because we always talk about someone to activate the emergency response system by calling 911. So she called 911, helped corral the kids, Cole got out there, managed to get Michael kind of on his back, and then swam to the nearest dock, next to the beach, got him out of the water, and then it was a little chaotic there for a few minutes, but managed to save him, and the great thing about this story, too, is like, this is besides on scene, where everyone kind of went their separate ways, is this is the first time Michael is meeting Cole and Lila again, so this is kind of nice. So with that, with that story, as we wanted to recognize, and I talked to the police chief at first, Chief Schaub's, and we wanted to recognize the hometown heroes who made that rescue, and like I said, just the fact that my wife ended up meeting Michael only a few days ago when I couldn't get ahold of him, is just, I can't even describe the answer to that.
That's a big...
Exactly, the universe said, well, he's going to come to the station, and so here he is. So Cole and Lila, if you can stand, and maybe we can give them a round of applause or something. All right, so with Cole and Lila, if you want to come up, I got some awards from you and the family, if you want to come up as well, and we can take some pictures.
Who's got a camera? I didn't bring one. Who can take? I don't need a camera. So get out of the way.
We'll take some cool pictures in a few minutes. Citizen Hero Award, awarded to Cole Hankston. In recognition of your life-saving actions on May 7th, 2023, your efforts were instrumental in saving Michael Hughes from drowning in Eastmont Ponce Lake, you truly embody a spirit of community and selflessness that makes the town of Halifax such a special place. Thank you. Second Citizen Hero Award, Lila Dooley, and it's L-Y-L-A, right? Thank you to, is it, Rebecca? Yeah, Rebecca, thank you for telling me that, because I spelled it wrong. In recognition of your supportive life-saving actions on May 7th, your efforts were instrumental in saving Michael Hughes from drowning in Eastmont Ponce Lake, you truly embody a spirit of community and selflessness that makes the town of Halifax such a special place, so thank you. Mike, you want to come up? So, okay, so this is Michael who Cole and Lila saved. Thank you, thank you.
That's great. Yeah.
Captain Cuzo, thank you for that, that was a marvelous, a marvelous thing, and to Cole and Lila, boy, we couldn't be more proud of our young people, and you people are, you two are representing absolutely the best that we can offer from Halifax, thank you for all you did, keep up the good work.
And I personally know Lila, and I know she's an exceptional kid, and if this guy's able to date Lila Dooley, he must be all right, too. So keep up the good work, guys.
Great job, guys, it's nice to see young people still jumping into action, not just sitting on their phones and going up there and making sure everything's happening in the right way and saving people, I like that, it's a lot. I appreciate everything that you guys do as young individuals, and it's great to see that you guys are still out there having fun, saving people.
Okay, so while we're talking about the fire department, we also have a letter from the fire department, I'm going to read the whole letter because they're asking for permission, but I think they also want a little publicity out of it. So this is to the Board of Selectmen, it says, "The Halifax Firefighters Local 3159 Collective Bargaining Unit is looking to run a fundraiser in town using a professional photographer and an antique vehicle that one of our members owns. We are looking for permission to utilize the town-owned property on South Street where the blacksmith shop is located. We are requesting permission to utilize the grounds only and not need any access to the buildings. We plan on parking the antique truck with holiday decor in the front of the blacksmith shop so that the historic building is in the background. We are looking to have access to the property for two dates in October and two dates in November, so we can do fall-themed photo shoot and a winter-themed photo shoot. The October dates are October 21st and 22nd, and the two dates for November will be determined later in October, and we'll provide them to the Board of Selectmen." Officer Hogan has spoken with the Halifax Historic Commission Chair Sue Basile, and she said that use of the property is not a problem on their end, they also said they will clean up, and that the Historic Commission would like a couple of photographs for the museum. Furthermore, we are requesting permission to use the small piece of land owned by the town located next to the fire department, between fire department and the elementary school. We would like to use this piece of land for the same purposes outlined above for the blacksmith shop. We are planning on multiple dates, both weekend and weekday, where the vehicle will be parked in the clearing, and people can pay a heavily reduced price and use their own camera or photographer for the pictures. This would be weather-dependent and approximately four to six dates, both in October and November." So they are requesting permission to use the area in front of the blacksmith shop, and also, I guess it's a piece of property over to the side.
PJ is here if you have any questions. PJ is here if you have any questions.
Oh, Officer Hogan, do you have anything you want to add, or maybe talk about, so you get a little more publicity, if you stand up and the camera can see you?
So Flyer, tomorrow, we're going to do a fundraiser, one of our guys, like I said in my letter, owns a 1950's International truck, it's gorgeous, we went up, we kind of surveyed the property before we gave it to you, we took some sample photos. Flyer's will be out tomorrow, as long as the board approves it, and it'd be kind of cool, because everyone's going to get a piece of Halifax history, and, I mean, I grew up in town, that's one of my favorite buildings.
Fantastic.
Definitely cool to see.
Okay, so we're pushing for everybody to go and get their picture taken.
Yeah, no, PJ showed me a sample picture of what it's going to look like, it's really nice, and a lot of families get their photos done anyway, so why not do it in a way that can help the town, so I think it's a win-win situation.
And then next door, we're going to call it BYOC, right by the camera, and that way if somebody doesn't want to spend for a professional photographer, they can show up with their iPhone, their family, take a many pictures as you walk, we'll see if they have the donation box out there.
Perfect.
The reason the dates are in on that one is Jeff Archer, he owns a truck, he's on shift, he's just going to park it next door, so that way he's here, park it next door, take it home the next day, and then come back in, say his next name.
Fantastic.
Awesome.
Great idea.
Thank you.
All right, so do we have a motion for approving the use of the two pieces of property?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Excuse me, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Good luck, I hope it works out well, it sounds like a great idea.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, we have a, we did the road opening, Town Green Beautification Commission has asked to use the Town Green on October 14th from 8:45 to 12 noon. Halifax Beautification Committee is planning to have a fall cleanup from, a week from 10:14 to 10:22, we would like to use the Town Hall Green on 10:14 for the purpose of distributing supplies. So, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the use of the Town Green for the Halifax Beautification Committee.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
And anyone who's interested? And anyone who's interested, I'm sure the Beautification Commission would love to have help. If you want to go on the 14th, they'll give you trash bags and gloves usually and that type of thing, and they'll give you an assignment. Go pick up trash someplace. That's a great, it's a great lot of fun. All right. Any discussion from the board?
No. Thank you for doing it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. 6:30, we have Mr. Barrows. Ah, come on up, well, actually, probably want to come up there so we can get you recorded.
Hey, Dylan, how are you? What's going on?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So if you would just introduce yourself to the, we're on recording and...
Hi, folks. My name is Don Barrows, President of the Mont Ponce Water Association. The rest of the board is here as well. We've been studying the ponds and we've been treating, having it punched, not us, but we had, we got the effort to get the ponds treated. So all I'm doing tonight is, we want to introduce ourselves, John and I, the other one I really rec, met before, and the rest of the board and the town administrator. So this is just a quick little leaflet. And on the back, the last page, if you look on the bottom, it's two notes that we have, and it's, the first one is just want to make sure that we keep going what we've been doing with Solitude, the, the lake management company that I think we're still engaged with, I believe. And I know there's still some money left over. I'm not sure if every year that, that coffer is going to get increased, but we just have to keep an eye on it. And testing is a big thing, even though, look, the ponds the last two years, if you notice, I put, the last two years have been open, the ponds, the beaches have been open, the ponds have been open. And we want to keep that going. It's really, the water's really great. I'm surprised myself. So if you could just, that first thing was the treatment, and then the second issue is, this is a new issue that we've seen is wake, wake surfing, and they're deep V boats that really should only be in 15-plus feet of water, not 12 and 11 and 10 like it is in both ponds. So there's nothing legally, I tried to find something legally about it, there's really nothing about it legally to say you can't be on the water. So that's something that we're going to work on. But what's happening is those boats are actually bringing up the bottom of the pond because they're, they're really heavy and they're, if someone's going to surf on the wake of a boat, they need that boat to be really deep in the water to have a big wake, and that's what's happening. And it's bringing up the bottom. So that's something that Solitude might even be working on when we do talk to them after the winter. So I appreciate you listening, and that's, that's all I really got for tonight.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
So I'm not a boater. I get seasick looking at a glass of water, so I don't know. But what are you talking about with this wake boarding?
So these boats, if, is a master craft, it's called Master Craft, is mostly the maker of these boats, and they're really deep V heavy boats. And what they do is they create a wake on the back of the boat that someone can actually surf without being connected to the boat. It, it's kind of, it's kind of fun to watch, it's not good enough for the water, but they're not connected at all. They make a wake so someone's actually surfing on the back of the boat. And the reason they can do that is because it's a huge wake and it digs, it goes down below and brings the water up with these engines and the way the boat is made. So, you know, I didn't even know this was a problem. I didn't realize until one of our members, Jeremy Gillespie, brought it up, and I went, wow, he has a whole bunch of paraphernalia on it, but there's nothing legally we can do right now. So we're going to work on that. So that's, that's the two things, the testing and this issue.
Is this something, is this something new that's just started?
Yeah, well, I've been on, I've been here 14 years on the West Pond, and I've, I've never seen it before. They do wake boarding? That's not as bad because it's not a deep V heavy boat. But these ones where the surfing is there, you can see the wakes. I can, they're on the other side of the West Pond. I live on the ocean half side, and those wakes still hit my property and my boat. My boat goes all over the place. So it's, 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 yeah, it's, I think it's an issue. So going forward, we'll all kind of keep an eye on it.
Any questions?
No.
Okay. Is it making the water any less clean? Like you just said, the water's great?
No, the water is, it is.
So it's not, so just mixing up the sediment on the bottom of the, on the bottom of the ponds?
So what happens, when they treat the ponds?
Yep.
It's aluminum sulfate, and it seals that, all the, help me, phosphorus, thank you, Bob. Phosphorus on the bottom, it seals it. That's where it's supposed to stay. These boats are going to make that happen, and it's going to happen eventually naturally. That's why after a few years, we're going to have to treat the pond again. But this is, like I said, I don't, haven't really read all the paraphernalia on it, but it, it looks like it's going to be a problem. And you're right, the water looks good, but I just feel as though that's detrimental. And some of these studies that I just saw, headlines and read little blurbs, say that it shouldn't be in a pond under 15 feet of water. I mean, with the level of 15 feet of water. So we'll see. But we'll keep an eye on it, and we'll keep you guys posted too.
What, what's your thought? The watershed, Mont Ponce Water Shed Association is a group of people who live around the lakes, right?
Yeah, and not just on the water, but in town, in both hands.
So what is your group's thought about what you think you want to have, what you want to see having done with this?
John, this is brand new. Just, it's funny, because I had this, I wanted to meet you anyway, so that we haven't met. And then this all happened, and so I, like I said, I, I don't know yet, but we're going to get, we're going to get the facts and see what we can do. Just every facet of keeping the ponds clean, so that's all.
So I'm just thinking, like, I mean, we do have some control, we don't have all control over the lake, it's a state-owned property early, but we do have some control over it. And most of our control we can do through, through our own local bylaws. It's something to think about, you know, if, if that's what you think is the right solution, assuming there's the problem, right?
Right, right. We'll get more into it, but it's just nice to meet you guys anyways, and we'll be in touch.
Appreciate it.
You had a great summer, and now we're going to get into, now we're going to have some meetings, and want to get together on some things. We'll be back.
Very good.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yeah, that's great. Mr. Gillespie, got to come up to the mic there and tell everybody who you are.
Jeremy Gillespie, nine years of experience. Thanks to Don and the Mont Ponce Water Service Association. They've done a lot of work on, on both lakes over the years, and everybody really needs to appreciate their effort. I have a little bit more information about what a wake surfing boat is, it'll be really brief. So basically, these boats are specifically designed to displace as much water as possible. They have ballasts in the back in which they can pump up to 5,000 pounds of water into to weigh the boat down, so they can create as much displacement as possible. They also have plates that they can drop down on either side, so that it can create a wake up to and over four feet in height. These waves have been proven to be much more destructive than wind-driven waves starting the surface. So I've observed this going on, this is the first year I've ever seen a wave surfing boat out there. I saw the wave for the first time, was like, I've never seen a wave like that on, on Ponce. It's actually like a tsunami wave. You see the water start going out, and then what that's doing, it's pulling nutrients and everything else away and out of the shore, and then it comes in, it's, they're very destructive. They only go about 12 miles an hour, and they're sitting in the, in the water like this, and that's how they operate. There's no ropes. Now, there's been wake boarders that have been coming out for years. I've never seen really having a problem. But wake surfing is extremely destructive, not only to the property owners around Mont Ponce. I've seen four sinus bacteria blooms this summer, very small. Three of them occurred after a wake boat was on the water within two days. So this is something that's not only detrimental to property owners, it's also detrimental to the ecology of the lake. It will be detrimental to the water quality, and surfing can be done 10 miles away on the Atlantic Ocean. This is a big problem up in the Midwest where they're not around the ocean. We have an ocean right there if you want to go surf. Mont Ponce was not designed to be surfed, Don. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think we have any no-wake zones on our lake?
No. Just a swimming area, blocked off swimming area. Yep.
Just on the beaches. We work with Solitude throughout the year regularly. I mean, we can have them look at it and just, you know, I'm sure they'll bring it up if it's something that they're concerned with. So we work with them regularly.
I would be concerned, not just, I mean, the environmental issues, one thing that they're talking about, and I don't pretend to understand that, I don't, I don't really know anything about it, I just heard about it now. But it does strike me that if the waves are that big, that it's probably not appropriate for a small lake like we have, you know, there shouldn't be, there shouldn't be big waves on there. I mean, in the beach area, we already got one complaint last week about that. And, you know, I, I imagine it's destructive to the docks, it's destructive to other, you know, so if somebody's on a kayak or whatever, you know, it just, it just doesn't seem right. So maybe that's something that, that should be thought about, but I, I think we'd have to do it through some bylaw changes or something like that.
I think, just really quickly, John, I think part of it is the lakes are being used now, you know, and it's, I don't want to say a good problem to have, but it's nice to see people using the lake. So I think we as a town have to come up with more strategy, seeing that there's more activity on the lake. I love seeing the activity, but now it's up to us to try to come up with how we're going to, I don't want to say police it, but come up with how we can enjoy it safely for everybody.
It has to be balanced, you know, we can't have one particular type of activity take over everything, so you can't go fishing, or you can't go swimming, or whatever. Not that you want to interfere with people with their, what do you call that, waterski maybe, or something like that, but, I mean, I think, I think we need to have a balance is what we need, you know? So everybody can enjoy it, not just like, you know, I can't go down there because there's this, that, or the other thing, so.
Yeah, no, it's, it's good to see opinions.
Okay, we have a couple of minutes to do a few more things. So we have a, a town administrator has drafted a code of conduct for elected and government officials. Everybody had a chance to take a look at that?
Yeah. I have a copy of it here if you don't. Cody, you want to just give us a little explanation, and we can go from there?
Absolutely. This is becoming very common throughout the state. It's really, you know, as the chief policymakers for the town of Halifax, it's good to set, you know, expectations for boarding committee members throughout the town. So this is a code of conduct that I have drafted, using information from other communities, and it really just lays out, you know, several different bullet points here, and the idea of how members should conduct themselves, and the expectations of members who are going to be on a border committee in the town of Halifax. And if you were to approve this, what we would do is we would give this to the town clerk. We would also post on the website, and as new boarding committee members are elected or appointed in town, we would just ask the town clerk to give them a copy and ask the members to read through and sign it, just saying that they understand the, the code of conduct. And so that's, that's really the gist of it. There's 20 different sections here, and if there are any questions, we're more than happy to answer them.
You know, the Ten Commandments was all on one page. And that's held pretty good for so far, so apparently we need to expand on it. Anybody from the board have any suggestions, any questions?
No, I read through it. I think it's great, Cody. I think it's nice work. How would we handle folks that are already in it? Would we distribute it to everybody currently on a border committee and, and go through it now? It's not just for new members, right?
No, we would email it out to everybody, and like I said, post it online. You know, 99.9% of people are, are already kind of know the expectation, follow the expectation, but this is just a formal policy that you will have voted in, you know, as kind of the key leaders of the community and set that expectation. And the idea would be every year after the election, the local election, we could revisit this and just have the board re-vote it, whether there may be a new member, maybe there's changes we need to make, but just revisit it every year and set those guidelines.
That's a great idea.
We, we do have in our agenda for ongoing projects, training for boards and committees, this would be part of it. Okay, so, excuse me, I will, I will move to adopt the draft code of conduct.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion from the board?
No.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Wait a minute, before we take a vote, yeah, Frank?
Frank Johnson, Elm Street Finance Committee. So existing members would have to hold this.
Yeah, that's what I was just asking.
Guys want to make sure that, so we're already setting on board or committee or whatever, that it would also be responsible, so.
The idea here is we have a, one single town-wide code of conduct, expected conduct, and to look through it, again, it's like, like Jonathan said, it's really, there's nothing in here that would surprise a normal person, right? Like just basically behave yourself is kind of what we're saying, so.
Yeah, so similar, Cody, to what we look at on the ethics, when we go through our ethics on the state sites and take those certifications.
It is. It touches on ethics, it expands upon that, and just, you know, how you should act in a public meeting. Treat people with respect, treat town employees, fellow board members with respect. It's, it's really just that in a nutshell.
Yeah, I think it's a good thing for, for, for everyone, because there's a lot of new people kind of coming in a lot of these committees and stuff, which is good, and we should all be on the same page.
Yeah, I think when, when I was elected, you, you think you know what you're doing, right? And it's nice to have, you know, this reminder here to, to kind of give you kind of a guideline. So I, I think it's a great idea.
No gifts, no conflicts of interest, just pretty straightforward stuff.
Yeah, it's good.
All right. Okay, any other discussion? Yes, sir. Jim, yep.
Jim Walker's Orchard Circle. You might, you might...
Yeah, you might come on up so we can, just so the TV can hear you.
The TV, TV guy.
Jim Walker's 26 Orchard Circle. I think this is a great idea. I'm just curious.
Hey, hold on. We get this guy?
I'm just curious, how many, how long this has been in play, and was there an opportunity for any other input of the people currently serving on committees? Or is this just, you know, kind of like, here it is?
We've been discussing this as a board, I think I probably mentioned it when I first started, you know, as something that the board should look at, and we, you know, I've had discussions individually with the board for the past seven months on this, and really I just use kind of the state guidelines of, there's not a lot of discretion in it, I guess. It's kind of mostly just law, and then anywhere it gets specific, it just says, "Specific to Halifax bylaws and Massachusetts general law."
I see. So any current board member who doesn't want to sign that has to step off. Could that be correct?
I mean, no, you're not signing saying you agree. You're signing saying you just understand, you just need a copy of it.
I was just curious. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other comments? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. I think it's, it's good. Okay. 6:45 is Ms. Martin Plant here. Hi, come on up front if you would. Apparently, welcome to Halifax. I guess you're new, you're new resident here, so I'm glad to have you.
You want to pass the mic?
Oh, yeah, we probably should have you up there, just. Okay, so what we have is a, I'll read the email from the Conservation Commission. It says, "Attached, please find a talent bank and recommendation for Melanie Martin Plant. The board met with Ms. Martin Plant during their Tuesday, September the 5th meeting. The committee agreed and voted unanimously three to zero to recommend Ms. Martin Plant to, as their fifth board member. They asked to have her on the agenda." And then we have an email from Ms. Plant, Martin Plant, saying, "I recently moved from Plymouth to Halifax with my husband in Plymouth. I was involved in environmental advocacy. I feel I'd be a good fit for an open position on the Conservation Commission." He's attached a letter of recommendation, talent bank form, and had asked to be appointed." Do you want to just tell us a little bit about your interest in the Conservation Commission?
Sure.
Pull that down. There you go.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure, um, I've always been in, involved and interested in environmental advocacy, I, I think everybody should be. I founded Sustainable Plymouth when I lived in Plymouth back in twenty nineteen, and I worked with select board members, the Board of Health, Planning Committee, um, Open Space Committee members, um, as a founding member of Sustainable Plymouth, and I, I was outside of the Conservation Commission, I was not a, a political appointee in Plymouth, I was just a citizen, but, um, we, we worked hand in hand with all of those committees that I mentioned. Um, so we, I grew that, that group that I founded from just a couple members to a couple hundred people that were interested in, in rotating, coming to meetings, and we got quite a bit done, so, um, and they're, they're still ongoing and, and doing great. So, um, yeah, it's, for me, everybody should be involved in environmentalism, and we need to do what we can to protect our ecosystem, so that's why I would like to be a member.
Okay, any questions from the board?
No. Your application looks great, you, uh, and thank you for including your letters of reference there, and, uh, they said they were sad to see you go on Plymouth, so we're happy to be on the receiving end of that, so, welcome to Halifax.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Um, so, uh, do we have a motion to appoint Ms. Martin Plant?
I'll make a motion to appoint, uh, Melanie Martin Plant, uh, to the Beautification Committee. Uh, do we have a term on that, or?
Conservation.
Sorry, guys, so just for the record, I'm not playing solitaire. We're trying a new, uh, system here where I'm using the iPad, so, uh, it's a little squirrely, I know.
It's not good at it.
I'm a little bit of a Luddite. Um, so I'll take that back, I'll make a motion to appoint Melanie Martin Plant, uh, to the Conservation Commission for the term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, thank you again for your volunteering and welcome to Halifax.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, you can sign in. Okay, um, next on our, we did the road cuts.
So just updates and then town administrator's update.
Just the, uh, code of conduct we did, so just the updates, okay?
Yep.
Okay, uh, we'll turn it over to our town administrator on, uh, some of these updates.
So the MBTA action plan, we continue to work with a consultant who is doing some behind-the-scenes work, uh, to evaluate potential compliance with the action plan. Uh, we hope to have him into the zoning bylaw review committee meeting, um, in the next month or so, and also schedule, uh, meetings with the planning board and zoning boards for him to come in and do a little bit of training, uh, on potential, uh, options to be in compliance with the MBTA, uh, three A zoning. Uh, Morse Brothers, we received word from Morse Brothers a few weeks ago that they would be, uh, conducting some work. After further review, we did notify Morse Brothers that they needed to apply for a permit under the earth removal bylaw, um, in the town, and since then, they have notified us that they will be submitting a permit, so, uh, as soon as we get that, we'll pass that along to the applicable, applicable departments within town for their comment and follow the process as outlined in the bylaw, and then obviously there'll be a public hearing, uh, through the board of selectmen.
I would like to, uh, just to suggest to the board of selectmen that we adopt, at least for this one, and this is kind of an experiment to see how it works, but also because I do anticipate that the public hearing will draw a lot of interest, it always does over there, and I want to, um, be sure that, uh, we run, uh, the hearing in a, uh, in a, in a measured and organized way, so, uh, what I, what I propose is this, that, um, anyone, uh, that we will, we'll open the meeting like we normally would, uh, we'll allow the proponents for, for the permit to make their presentation, um, assumably they won't go on too long, but they have to be thorough, so they tell us everything that is important. Uh, we'll then take comments from the, um, uh, from the, from the town officers that are involved, which would be the Board of Health, uh, the Water Commission, the Town Engineer, uh, those, those folks that have reviewed this, and whatever comments and suggestions they might have, uh, as far as the permit goes. Uh, after we've done that, uh, what I, uh, would, uh, open it up to the public for comments, but what I would like to do is anyone who wants to, um, uh, make a comment at the open session part, we'll ask them to sign, a sign-in sheet, um, just telling, you know, their name, uh, and then, um, what I will do is, uh, I will just go down the signup sheet, so, you know, if, if Mr. Nazarala is the first one, then, okay, you, you have your turn, if you're the second one, you have your turn, so that way everybody know, I, I don't have to, uh, we, we don't have to be in the position of saying, oh, you know, you ignored this guy, you should have picked on this guy, or somebody's jumping up and down and, and so on, we're just going to do it in a measured way. And I would also recommend that the preliminary, the first statements from anyone from the public should be limited in time. Um, I'm thinking three minutes, uh, should be enough time to, um, you know, for, for folks to tell us what their concerns are. Uh, once we go through the whole list, if some of those folks want to have a, a second opportunity, uh, I'll call on them, they can just let us know, uh, and we'll limit that to maybe two minutes, so, you know, a total would be five minutes, and if you can't make your case in three to five minutes, then you, you're really talking too much. Um, so those, those are my recommendations for how to run. Uh, I would like to make a, a motion to do that for the public hearing, for the Morse Brothers anticipated permit, uh, and we'll see how it goes, and if it works, we can turn it into more of a, a regular policy, but I think for this one issue, because it's caused so much, um, uh, interest, uh, that I think, uh, it just seems to me it'd be a better way to handle it.
Can I just clarify something, John, on that?
Sure.
Um, so let's say I have a comment as, as a citizen, or somebody does, and somebody would like to, I don't know, rebuttal, but remark on that, on their comment, are you going to, do you foresee yourself allowing that, or are you going to say, hold on, you'll, you'll have a chance to rebut that later on, after I go down my list?
Sure, yeah, so whoever signs up on the list gets first shot, you know, so you get first shot, the first guy on the list gets the first shot, and it goes right down, not that that matters a lot, but at least that way we know how many people want to speak, everybody knows, I've got my time, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna wait in my time.
Sure.
And then, like you say, if after that's done, uh, someone wants to make a, uh, comment of some sort, uh, that we'll, we'll allow it, but we're going to cut that time down a little bit more, and we'll just keep track of the time, um, but I do think that's right. And I, and, you know, I mean, I don't expect anybody to, to do this, but sometimes people get, the emotions get very hot in these, some of these hearings, this kind of thing, or dog hearings or whatever, and I'm, I'm trying to, to really...
Diffuse that.
Diffuse that as much as I can, uh, and just keep it on a, on a very businesslike, professional level, you know, if there are issues that need to be addressed, we'll address those issues, uh, without, uh, name-calling or, or, you know, accusations of this, that, and the other thing, I'll, I'll try to keep that out of it.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Sounds good.
All right, so you want to make a motion to, uh, approve our, uh, plan of public hearing for the Morse Brothers application, uh, at our future meeting?
Okay, um, so...
Yeah, same.
Second?
Second.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, and we'll, um, when we, when we announce the public hearing, uh, I think we should at least say, you know, com, public comments will be accepted, going to have to sign up, uh, when you show up for the meeting.
I'll write up, I'll write this up into a formal document, we'll have it ready for that meeting.
All right, that's perfect, thank you. Okay, uh, um, our, Ms. Martin, uh, just, I don't know if anybody told you, but you will have to just go to the town clerk and get sworn in, you understand that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then Pam will have your card, uh, I think by the end.
Yeah, I was going to give it to Sue, I was going to send her a letter, but I'm going to give it to Sue tomorrow morning, so you can come in whenever, but you'll get a letter in the mail also from me, okay? Okay, thank you.
All right, I forgot to tell them that.
It's okay.
Okay, you're up, uh, training for board.
Uh, no new updates on training for boards and committees, uh, town operations and staffing, we're continuing on with the, uh, compensation and classification study, uh, we continue to keep the employees updated of the status. We actually have a meeting, uh, with the employees and the consultant tomorrow to go over, uh, the process, the, the aspect that they'll be involved in with a questionnaire.